Called to order the meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, August 6, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Sims.
Here.
Herrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Tonight's emigration will be given by Reverend David Henry, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, we pray that you will visit us at this moment as these men and women leaders of our city would assemble themselves to transact the city's business. Father, we pray for your wisdom, and we pray for your strength and your grace upon this assembly. We pray, Father, for our teachers and students as they start a new year in school. May this be a great year for them. And we pray for our city and our citizens all across Shawnee. We pray their Father that you may watch over us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
There we got that. Mr. Sims, and then what's...
Okay.
Call roll please.
Just a minute. I mean, do we want to even consider this agenda with three people absent? I'm not... I mean, do we want to adopt the whole agenda when we've got three people on the floor, councilman here?
I recommend to you that you adopt, unless you want to just continue this meeting, adopt the agenda. And if you get to items you don't think are appropriate to consider, either if staff doesn't ask you to withdraw them, you want to continue them, do them. Because you do have... You have some things that I would think you'd want to go forward with in terms of... I don't know, there's some... The water and sewer rates, the drought management, those kind of things. It's probably easier just to strike items as you go if you don't want to consider them. But you can also make a motion to just adjourn and leave. Those motions aren't debatable.
Then have call a special meeting?
It'd be up to you whether you want to call a special meeting.
I'd kind of agree with James. I think most of the things on our agenda tonight are significant, and I would move that we call a adjourned this meeting, I guess, and call a special meeting.
We already have a motion.
Oh, sorry. Hadn't been seconded.
Yes, it has.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Oh, it's my motion.
Motion to...
Yeah.
You can withdraw.
I'll withdraw my motion.
But a motion to adjourn takes precedence, even if there's a motion on the floor.
All right.
And it's not debatable, so...
Well, and call a special meeting for... What's our notice time on a special meeting?
Forty-eight hours.
So say Thursday. It's the same time.
Well, the reason I say that is, you know, we might cover some of the items and get them off of there, and that way shorten the agenda. But if the mayor's not here, you know, why are we going to appoint a commission or a committee that the mayor's not even here for?
I think they're all at freshman orientation at the high school is the problem. I just assume have everybody here to discuss the entire agenda.
Well, then, you need to take a parliamentary step somewhere along the way here, one of you, somebody.
Well, I move to adjourn and call a special meeting for Thursday at 6:30.
That's actually two motions, sorry.
Okay, I move to adjourn without making the motion for a special meeting, correct?
Sure you can. If you want to make a motion to adjourn, and then there's a way to call a special meeting by...
What, three commissioners?
Your request.
Okay, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Any other discussion?
Let me tell you this, all motions tonight must be unanimous. It takes four.
Yeah.
So...
Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Herrod.
I was just sitting here thinking we could get some of these items off of there. What I was thinking about doing was cutting some of the items out of the agenda and go ahead and proceeding with it.
But if it takes four votes, it's a moot point.
This is not a debatable motion.
Right.
Need for you to vote. Sorry.
No?
No.
Collier.
Doesn't really matter.
It doesn't matter.
Put me down for a yes.
Okay, now you're back to the motion which is on the floor, which was, I believe, to approve the agenda. And it had a second, so you can discuss that and her vote.
Well, I think there's some of the items on here that we can go ahead and move, clarify and move through with, but there's some items that I feel like all seven people need to be present to discuss and to go on with. And the reason I voted no is I don't want a meeting Thursday night.
Well, I think all of these things have to be addressed.
Okay, if we had to... You still have a motion?
I withdrew my motion.
Do we have a...
We do not have any motion on the floor. Did you consent to his withdrawal of his motion?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So now we have no motions on the floor. I will tell you that before you go ahead and pass a motion not to approve the agenda, I've been through a lot, but I've never ended up where they didn't approve the agenda. So I don't know how we'll get to each item if the agenda is rejected, but it's up to you to decide what you want to do.
I'd move we adopt the agenda, but there's some of the questions that I don't want to, you know, discuss or think that the full commission ought to be here to discuss.
And hence the need for a special meeting. We're kind of at a stalemate.
Do we have a second?
Can I second it?
Sure.
I will second it, yeah.
Well, seriously, there's some items that can stand agenda and the bids and stuff like that. We can open the bids and things like that and get that out of the way. So we don't want to have a special meeting, we want to have a three, four, five hour meeting.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Herrod, and I second it. Call roll please.
But if you'll consent to a special meeting on Thursday, I would agree with that.
Are we on Friday, but not on Thursday?
Friday night at 6:30? Okay.
To look at the items we don't continue with tonight.
Mr. Chairman, before you go any further, I might stop and just say, the city manager can call a special call meeting, or three commissioners can call a special call meeting. Friday night might not be a good night for folks. We might be in the same position that we are now. If you'll just let us go ahead and get, take a poll of commissioners so that we can get them here, I think that would be advisable.
Yeah, because we don't know... If we want to get more people here, we'll have to make phone calls, I'm sure, make sure what date's more best with. I think we're ready to call roll. Let's try it.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Got motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Herrod, approve the consent agenda. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item three, citizens' participation.
I tell Tomlinson, five boroughs, Shawnee, Oklahoma, and I'm kind of disappointed that you didn't have enough to... Well, you got enough, I guess, to pass anything you want to, if everybody agrees, but I just wanted to make a statement regarding the timing of... There's about four issues on the agenda that I think all of y'all are aware, certainly by now, are kind of controversial. And I don't have any, myself, I don't have strong feelings about most of them, but they're issues that are a little controversial, and they're particularly issues that are going to have long-lasting effects for years to come. And, you know, those include obviously the, what you do with Convention Bureau. My concern about the appointment of a swimming pool advisory board is that's a mayor's appointment, and the mayor's only got another three weeks. So there'd be a new mayor, might like to be able to make the appointments of the people he's going to work with himself. And then there's a couple of executive items, I guess, where the city attorney and the city manager are looking to enhance some way their benefits or severance, issues regarding their contract. Again, the four of you guys, together with three new elects, are going to be working together as new commission in three more weeks, and three people are obviously not going to be involved anymore. And I would just ask if you can consider putting those controversial issues, unless there's some urgency that's not apparent, wait until next month and letting the four of you, who will be then the veterans on the commission, along with the three new members, be involved in those decisions together, rather than the four of you all and the three members who aren't going to be here any longer. And that's my point. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sure you all remember me, that's Herschel Ring. I live in fourteen seventy East Braden. I know y'all's kind of short, but I thought I'd bring this anyway. What you're looking at here is a police report and protective order deal on there that says that if you commit fraud by filling those out, that you will be...
Excuse me just a second. Mary Ann, can we even listen to... Because this is a personnel...
This is a personnel issue over which you have no jurisdiction. It has been aired numerous times.
One thing I might...
The staff's not able to respond because it's a personnel issue. The district attorney's office can pursue any criminal matters they choose to pursue. We cannot. Internally, it's been reviewed and handled in a way that was deemed appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, this subject has also come up very regularly. The mayor wrote a letter to Mr. Ring telling him what his options were for relief, including going to the DA's office to seek relief for that, and I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware.
That is not exactly what I'm here about. I believe that if those things are on those papers stating that they're not going to be enforced, I believe they should be removed from those papers if you're not going to enforce those documents. Also, Ms. Pam Stevens being the officer's lawyer, I believe Article 16 states that there will be no fee or retainer between a city employee and a city council member, or they will lose their seat. That's Article 16, Section 1. And Mr. McDougal, as far as I'm being up for, if that's a... His job, I would not put him back in that job. I'm not happy with it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will say this, those are not our documents, those are the state of Oklahoma's documents.
I don't know if you're going to go ahead tonight and vote on the contract with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but I want to address you as the chairman of the Tourism Advisory Committee. Over the past several months, you've had...
Sidney, it's you, Nate.
Oh, Dane Poli, I'm sorry. Over the past several months, you've had numerous opportunities to call the Tourism Advisory Committee, to talk to any of the members, to talk to the chamber. To date, you've not chosen to do so. The Tourism Advisory Committee is more than willing to talk about updating the contract. I believe the chamber would be as well. And I'll only remind you that there is a valid contract in place. The chamber has not done anything to break that contract. There have been no accusations of a breach of contract. The only accusations have been the baseless and slanderous accusations made by Commissioner Sims. If your legal advice is that you can unilaterally break a valid contract, you might want to get better legal advice. But again, before that happens, hopefully all parties can just sit down, talk about a contract, talk about what's in the best interest of the community. The Tourism Advisory Committee and the Convention and Visitors Bureau have a history of improvement every year in the number of visitors coming to town. They've been fiscally responsible. The money has been accounted for. There have been audits that have been done. They are public. The records are public and open to anyone's inspection. So if you decide to vote tonight, I hope it's to open up some kind of discussion so that we can get on with the business of bringing tourists to the community.
My name is Linda Agee, and as mentioned by earlier by Phil Tomlinson, there are some issues on tonight's agenda that may not be discussed, but I'd like to address those anyhow. Couple of those are issues that are going to be long-term, and there's no reason, no compelling reason, I think, why those issues have to be decided tonight or even Thursday night. I think those could wait until next month, when the new city commission members are on board and the new mayor. And those, of course, are the Convention and Visitors Bureau, how that would be administered, and also forming a new municipal pool committee. I don't know if it's standard practice or not, but it seems a little discourteous for an outgoing mayor with only three months, or three weeks, I'm sorry, left to appoint a brand-new committee and board without any input from the new mayor, who will be taking over. I can understand outgoing commission members wanting to finish up old business before they leave, but these two issues are not old business. They may have been discussed for several months, but they have a long way to go before being resolved. And the new commission members are going to have to work with those decisions that are made on these issues, and there's going to be three of you who will not be here to follow up on your decisions, and the three people who will be here will not have had any input into that decision-making, and I just don't think that's right. As a commissioner-elect myself, I would like to have an opportunity and ask you to have the courtesy of allowing me to have some input on those decisions before they're made. So unless there is a compelling reason that I may not be aware of, I'd like to ask you tonight if you discuss this. If not, then Thursday night or whatever special meeting that you have, that you defer those issues until September, especially those of you who we're going to be working with. Because we're not going to have a brand-new commission. There's going to be four people who are here right now, or on the commission right now, that are going to be here, and that's the majority. If there are promises that have been made, I'm sure that the majority of you will vote appropriately. As far as the contract for the city attorney and the city manager, those are something that I don't think that has to be made right away either, at the eleventh hour. Those of us who were elected to the city commission are pretty intelligent people. You know, we've kept up along the way with what's going on, and there's no need for an eleventh-hour decision before we take office. So I would ask you to hold off on doing anything there also. I don't think three weeks is going to make that much difference, one way or the other. Thank you.
Anyone else? Item four, consider an ordinance deannexing property located northwest of the intersection of Lake Road and Drummond Road, consisting of a part of a platte of rolling meadows.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, second. Yeah, motion by...
Is this the deannex question?
The deannex.
Do we have an explanation maybe just about what's happening here?
Commissioner Herrod, I'd be happy to explain this in a little bit more detail. This particular area is a part of town that is part of the larger conglomerate of city limit property out towards the lake area, and this is kind of on the far eastern end of that. And this property was assumed to be deannexed in nineteen seventy-five... Excuse me, nineteen seventy-two. And then it was further developed as part of the Rolling Meadows subdivision that was approved by Potawatomi County in nineteen seventy-five. And through the years, it appears, from records that I can, from all records that I can find, it appears that we've always assumed and treated this area as out of city limits and assumed that it corresponded with the boundaries of the platte. And so there's never been any permits that have been issued. The roads are private roads. The city has no maintenance or utility responsibility in this area. And more recently, since we've got better equipment, we've got good aerial photographs and good digital geographical data, we've been able to determine that there is a portion of this that is within the city limits. And one of the residents in the area brought it to our attention recently because of some construction activity, and his contractor came down to the city, and we... That's when we discovered that this was, that a portion of this was indeed in city limits. And so there's a color map there in your packets that identifies that strip of land. It's about a hundred acres, it's four hundred feet wide by a couple thousand feet deep.
It is actually making contact with the city limits now?
Yes, but in that particular part of the city limits, it's narrow and it just basically follows the right-of-way line of Lake Road. And so everything east of here will now be out of city limits until you get to the central part of the city.
This is actually on the end of the cloud road, isn't it? Like road to Gilford and the cloud?
Yeah, it's just northwest of the intersection of Lake Road and Drummond Road.
All right. I just want to clarify for the audience.
Read the title.
Read. Title, please.
Was there a second?
Yes, James, second.
This is an ordinance deannexing, detaching certain property now within the city limits of Shawnee, Oklahoma, describing said property, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we need to do a separate vote on the emergency?
Separate vote on the emergency.
Got a motion for the emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, consider acceptance of public easements and dedications associated with the final platte of Legacy Park, second edition, and authorizing recording of final platte and attainment of signatures.
So moved.
Second.
Got motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, consider resolution authorizing approval of ODOT-LPA agreement for the Kick Bush Street paving project.
Now, this is one of them I wanted to take care of, because I don't want any more delays on Kick.
Is it a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
I've got a question. It says a tenth of a mile north of University.
The project limit actually goes about a tenth of a mile north of MacArthur.
But why does it say University?
I don't know. We'll get that changed. You can make a motion with that correction, but the actual limit is a tenth of a mile north of MacArthur to the, just past the Kick Bus Spur.
So will you modify your motion? Okay. So that instead of University, it says north, it should say north of MacArthur?
Yes, sir. Originally, when this project first started, they broke it down into three separate phases because there were some funding issues, but then when that was all taken care of, we combined it all into one project.
Okay. Just want to make sure we were covering the whole thing, this one trip.
This is basically a boilerplate kind of agreement that really should have been done several months ago, but we just received it, and all the right-of-way's been taken care of. We got an email from right-of-way division, it's been cleared and sent to the local government. And this is basically just saying we're going to keep encroachments out of the right-of-way that we just purchased.
Right. Read the resolution, please.
This is a resolution approving the execution of a certain right-of-way public utility and encroachment agreement between the City of Shawnee and Department of Transportation of the State of Oklahoma regarding public project section 177-163A, 227 SG JP 22908.
Call roll please.
Sim, I'm sorry, Herrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven, consider an ordinance relating to the water and sanitary sewer rates. This was deferred from July 16, 2012.
I think I deferred it, so I'll make the motion like approved. So I believe everything's corrected, Stan.
We actually made an additional change, and it is down in section three, I think, because it used to stop zero to 1,000 gallons, and it didn't say, and then it said 1,000 to 4,000, and it stopped at 4,000. So we changed 1,000 to 4,000 to be over 1,000. So that is an additional change besides the typo that we found.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Herrod, and second by Commissioner Sims. This is an ordinance, we need to retitle.
An ordinance relating to water and sanitary sewer rates for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, amending sections A and B of section 2626, Article II, Chapter 26 of the Code of the City of Shawnee, amending water rates for residential and commercial use both inside and outside the city limits, amending subsections B and C, section 26-27, Article II, Chapter 26 of the Code of the City of Shawnee, amending sanitary sewer rates for residential and commercial use both inside and outside the city limits, providing perseverance and declaring an emergency.
Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight.
Excuse me, you need a separate motion for the emergency.
Emergency clause, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Herrod for the emergency clause. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, consider approval of an ordinance revising the drought management plan that was passed on and approved on June 16, 2012.
Commissioners, with this, all we did was clarify it a little bit. It's always been an odd, even watering system. The clarification really seemed to be that some residents were interpreting it as you could only water on certain days, whereas we were interpreting it that you would actually water from 6:00 PM on the day that you're allowed to water until 10:00 AM the next day, both for the Level 1 and the Level 2 restrictions. That's really all this is, is to clarify that.
We also added, moved commercial, to have the same restrictions on commercial outdoor watering that we have on residential. That was another change that was asked for in-house. It used to just say residential, other than household purposes, and commercial was required to reduce water usage, but not to limit its outdoor watering.
Well, I've had a lot of conversation with folks about hand-watering, and I guess Oklahoma City has an ordinance that allows for, clearly for hand-watering with foundations, shrubberies, nutrients, that kind of thing. shrubberies, new trees, that kind of thing. And I hate to move this one more time, but I think it's important, and maybe the level two's where we don't do that, but I think that we've all driven around our community and see the number of trees that are dying or dead from this current drought. There's a lot of new, new stuff. I'd sure like to see that added in that and, and considered as a part of this.
You're saying you want to have them to be able to water around the foundation so that we can?
Hand, well, yes, and handwater shrubberies, which requires, you know, being attendant to the hose, not sprinklers or whatnot, just hand watering to maintain foundation plantings, new trees, that kind of thing.
Yeah, because they're not going to be out there ten or twelve hours doing that.
At what level?
I don't, that would need to be a staff recommendation. I don't know if that could fall under level two as well. I mean, I understand the crisis with the production facility, but I also understand people's concerns with their.
You know, we.
And as we said, let me just interrupt you to say, as we said, it's not an issue that we don't have the water, it's the treatment capability of the water.
Yeah, madam, or Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we put this drought management plan together, and I always said that we would need to revisit it periodically. New industry, new residential development, if we upgrade the plant capacity and we can produce, we can treat more water, we can get a lot of it out there, but we can only treat about seven and a half, eight million gallons a day. Then things will change and we'll need to take a look at it. We've had requests from churches for charity car washes. We've had requests for foundations. We've had requests for hand watering. We've had requests for several other different requests. I think part of what the utility director and I talked about was we just kind of let things, we didn't have it in our current ordinance, but we'd kind of get those lists together and see which ones kind of, I guess, you know, rose to the top for better, for lack of a better word. I don't think we'd necessarily be opposed to that. I think our concern is just that the plant was reaching critical capacities. I mean, we were treating as much water as we were using at the same time that all the pumps were running and the, and the filters were producing it. So since we've implemented level two restrictions, we've really seen a fairly significant drop in our water usage. I don't think that, that at level one or level two, at this point, if the motion were made by the city commission to allow hand watering, that we would necessarily have a problem with that. But keep in mind, you know, different measures call for different, different circumstances. And, you know, the reason we're in this right now is because we had to help a neighbor. We had to help Tecumseh. They didn't have any water in their lake and their wells weren't producing, you know. Not in any good conscience could any of us say that we were not going to help them out with their water situation. So it is what it is. We'd certainly be, our recommendation would be that if hand watering were something the commissioners wanted to do, we'd be fine with that.
Well, it appears to be in our level three mandatory restrictions, that water usage is limited to watering shrubs and young trees only. So it kind of touches on it there. And that simple sentence could be hand watering could be allowed in those other categories. I mean, it may not be a big deal to anybody. To me, watching the trees around our community and the shrubbery die is a big deal. So maybe.
You want to make that in a motion?
I'll make that in a motion. I move to approve. I'm sorry.
Anybody like to maybe ask a couple more questions as to, since you're going to be hand watering is your point here, isn't it, we have a lot less usage after six o'clock or seven, somewhere around there, doesn't it go down or does it go up? Is there, can we get an answer?
When we were, when we were producing seven and a half million gallons a day, we were producing seven and a half million gallons a day, twenty-four hours a day. So that's partly the answer to your question. Yes, I think we have peak times.
Six is a peak time.
Six is a peak time.
Six P M.
When everybody gets home.
So, so I'm going to take a guess here, say six o'clock in the morning would be a lesser time? Lesser use?
Their table, everybody gets up at this peak time. The off times are between eight, nine, and five, six. At night, night times. And we use that to catch up. Night time under normal circumstances is when we fill the towers. And then you lose a little bit during the day and you fill it again. And that way you exercise the towers to give the water movement. So, yeah, there's definitely peaks and valleys. Most of the valleys are on the hillside. I mean, we could work something. That's not a fetish thing that we, you know, we kind of went into it. And we knew we were going to modify. It's not really a fair test this year, but this Tecumseh is on it. They're not the bad guy or anything. It just happens, so if they get their lines of West Watkins and they do their own thing and then we're back to our regular demand, it's more of a fair test on the drought management plan than it is now. So to modify it now and try to make it fit now won't fit next year, so.
And I don't disagree with you, Jim, but I think the concern is just a lot, I mean, I honestly have had a lot of people upset about the fact they're losing stuff and we've read in the newspaper, the blame game of, you know, if we weren't supplying Tecumseh, we wouldn't be having this problem, but we've done the right thing and now it's just making it convenient or good for our citizens as well.
If we can probably afford to hand water, people would do what they're supposed to do on the sprinklers, but they're still not. We're still going out to catch the people running their sprinklers whenever they want to. I mean, just look at the green yards and you tell it's cheap. So if, if there's more, if there's more, and even field, then maybe you can make room for hand watering and this and that. My concern is keeping enough water.
Right, for drinking.
Creating the towers for fires and stuff like that, which we've seen lately how unfortunate it is.
Okay.
So, you know, I wish we had enough water and everybody could do it when they wanted to, but when it went to seven, five, treating, and we were pumping seven, eight, and the towers were still going down, that's an ugly feeling. I like that feeling. And so we've now got it, I'm not going for this rationing, down to about six point seven, which is still pushing more water than usual, but it's a lot more comfortable than seven five. And just do it, having it wide open like that, we can't do that all the time. And is seven five all the time?
Well, I would move to approve it as it is and hope you all would consider that.
I thought we already did that when we were talking about the emergency.
And hope you all would consider that hand watering as an option P D Q. I understand the boilerplate aspect of what you're doing and I would move to approve that.
One explanation about the green yards, you can't see mine from the highway, but we spent the money years ago on drilling well, so there's several of those around town too, so.
Got motion by Commissioner Sims to approve the drought management plan. Second, and Commissioner Harrod, second. Call, no, read the ordinance, please.
This is an ordinance relating to a drought management plan for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, repealing and amending sections twenty-six sixty-seven and twenty-six sixty-seven point one of the Shawnee Municipal Code setting forth voluntary and mandatory restrictions for water use in case of water shortages, providing for penalties, providing for repealer, providing for complication, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we have a motion for the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Harrod. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, discussion, consideration, and possible action to determine whether to renew contract with the Shawnee Area Chamber of Commerce for operation of the convention and visitor's bureau, and if so, discussion, consideration, and possible action on amendments to the contract.
I would move that we move item nine through twelve. You don't want to consider the bids.
Let's, let's do nine, ten, and eleven together because they are related. Then do twelve separately. And then we'll talk, and then when you get to thirteen, a couple of those are only opens. So nine through eleven first, please.
Yeah, to a special meeting, date to be determined. Second.
Got motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Mr. Smith. Call roll, please.
Well, if we're out of, somebody votes no, then that fails. If you come back and make another motion, then there'll be somebody against it, so you're actually at a stalemate, aren't you?
Unless it goes to a special meeting.
You're very close to a stalemate, just like we were on the approval of the agenda.
Like I say, if the only night is going to be Thursday night, then I'll vote no on it because I'm not going to meet on Thursday.
It does not need to be Thursday night, but that's what I said at a later date.
The motion was at a later date, so I'm, I'm sure that the C manager hears that everyone's desire for it to be seven, so.
And six thirty on Friday.
It's fit to work it out when that can happen.
We had you say seven.
Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would move we defer or continue item twelve to a special meeting as well, at a date to be determined. Second.
I'm going to read it, so everybody out there knows. It's, item twelve is considered mayor's appointment of the following as an advisory committee for improvements to the Shawnee Municipal Pool.
And I got a motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith to defer it also to a special call meeting. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
No.
Collier?
Aye.
I don't want it deferred. I don't want it on there at all.
Well, it's not deferred, so now it's on there.
I move we just strike it from the agenda or move it to after September the fourth agenda or whatever.
Pick one.
Well, move the, move it to after September, let the mayor, the incoming mayor appoint the committee after September the sixth.
Got motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner, that motion actually said after September. Is that your intent?
After September the sixth, yeah.
After September the sixth?
Yes.
That would move it to the second meeting in September.
I just looked it up.
Wait, did you say the second meeting?
That would move it to the second meeting in September.
So after, okay, the second meeting, all right.
I don't think it'd be fair for the new mayor to come in fair night and not have time to, you know, to consider to meet with the city manager, James Bryce, or anything else.
Have a motion, still don't have a second. Looks like the motion dies by lack of second. Don't have any other motion.
Hope to include it with a special meeting to be determined.
Second, I guess, we're trying again.
Got motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith to have it included in a special call meeting. Let's try this again. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
No.
Collier?
Aye.
There's no action on this item.
So we can just move on to the next one?
I would say yes.
Item thirteen, consider bids. A Harrison Street Planter Project Contract Number C O S P W eleven dash oh-six award.
This is the project out on North Harrison, the planter project. We opened bids last meeting. We've tabulated the bids. It's in your packet. Lowest and best bid received was from Rudy Construction in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Rudy Construction is the contractor that did the St. Gregory's Trail project for us. We have no problems with them whatsoever, and we would recommend award of the project to Rudy Construction in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So, second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Sims to award the project. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, RFPs for phone system replacement, open.
Is that that big old box you were carrying?
Mayor Commissioners, Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. We advertised for proposals for vendors to replace our phone switch and the system that goes with it for City Hall, the annex building, to look at potential growth, to add on as we can additional sites that the city owns. And we asked for an alternate quote also for adding on the Public Works Facility, since we do have connectivity between this building and the Public Works Facility. We had vendor tours and a meeting with the vendors in June. During July, several vendors called. We answered a lot of questions, gave some more one-on-one tours with their personnel as necessary, and we have received quotes this evening that we have opened. Phone system quotes that I will be reading to you this evening will be for the hardware and software, for the phone switch, the cabling, the voicemail system, and a fax server as part of the system. There will be additional costs depending upon which vendor, which we choose for handsets and stuff like that, but it's very difficult to put into a proposal this evening, so we'll have to negotiate that with the vendor based upon whatever method we choose and recommend to you and you choose to go with. So the proposals that I'm reading for you this evening will be for the hardware, software, the labor, and the training for the City Hall and the annex, for voicemail, and for the fax server, and then the alternate quote for the Public Works Service Center. First proposal received was from B T C Broadband, a total amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. The alternate for Public Works was sixty-five hundred dollars and seventy-four cents. The second proposal is from Communication Services Incorporated. The total was forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. The alternate for Public Works was eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Our next quote was received from C K Telephone, the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nineteen cents, with the alternate for Public Works at twenty-five thousand, five twenty-three, twenty-eight. Fourth quote is from A O S. Their proposal price was one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. They did not offer an alternate for the Public Works Service Center. American Telecom, Inc. was the fifth proposal opened this evening. Their total for City Hall and the annex was one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents, and included in that package price is the alternate for Public Works. The sixth proposal is from Avaya, in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents. The alternate for Public Works is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and twenty cents. And the last proposal we opened this evening is from Stolt's Telecom, the amount of one hundred and twenty-six dollars, seven hundred, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, and the alternate for the Public Works Service Center is nineteen thousand, sixty-five dollars. Staff would recommend that you defer action on this to the second meeting in October to allow us to review. to allow us to review the proposals, to visit with the vendors, to do product demonstrations if necessary, and to come back with a recommendation.
Were there any addendums on the plans that...
There were no addendums.
Second.
Got motion by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C, RFQs for design of the municipal pool, open.
As you can see from your agenda packet, there was a lot of these sent out that they requested for us to send these out to them, plus it was advertised in the paper and out on the web. These groups kept me running for most of all last week, coming down here, looking at the pool. So, the ones that did turn in an RFQ are Planning Design Group, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Padoc Enterprises, Incorporated, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Randy Floyd Architects, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Bacchus Payne Associates Architects, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Guernsey Engineers Architects Consultants, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Brinkley Sergeant Architects, Dallas, Texas, Crafton Toll and Associates Incorporated, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, Waters Edge Aquatic Design, Lenexa, Kansas, and GH2 Architects LLC, Tulsa, Oklahoma. We will look over these, and when the, if the pool committee is established, or if not, then, then I guess, staff and the manager and all of us will look it over and decide who we'd like to bring in and view and interview. And then we will come back to you all with a recommendation to enter into contract.
I'd move we defer the action or any further, or anything further to after September the sixth.
I have a second.
Yeah, I don't think that affects the formation of the mayor's thing, so I would second that.
Got motion by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Smith to defer until after September sixth. Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
I didn't, I didn't say.
Aye.
Sims. Collier.
Aye.
Smith. Motion carries.
Item fourteen, new business.
No new business this evening, sir.
Item fifteen, administrative reports.
No administrative reports this evening.
Item sixteen, commissioners' comments. Nothing? Let's go on to item seventeen, considering executive session to discuss city attorney's appointment contract pursuant to twenty-five OS 307B1.
I'd move to defer this to the next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting?
Our next regular meeting, not this, not a special call. So, by two weeks, basically.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Harrod.
No.
Do I have any other motions?
The reason I voted against it is I would like to see us for all of these from seventeen through, no, not twenty, seventeen to twenty as a package deal.
Seventeen and eighteen?
Yes.
Nineteen and twenty are the action items.
Right. Okay. So, you want to...
I want to do them all, and we'll just pull...
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Got motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Sims to move seventeen through twenty all to the next regularly scheduled...
Yes.
Meeting. Call roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
We're at that stalemate again. If I vote no, then that means it won't happen at all, and I feel like there is a...
Well, there can be placed back on the agenda.
And I want you to vote it down, it can be.
You're not voting anything down, you're just not taking action. If it would help, I would be happy to ask to withdraw this item as it pertains to me. If you would allow me just to withdraw the item as it pertains to me, and you can agree to do that, then we can, you know, save this argument, not only save this argument, save this disagreement for another day.
Well, the thing about it is that it gives the appearance of looking like that the last minute here, we're trying to, you know, to correct some, I should say, are trying to correct somebody, doesn't give the appearance of being, of being that.
I'm happy to ask you to withdraw the item, to allow me to withdraw the item until a further date to be determined.
Mr. Chairman, I would also volunteer that as well.
I withdraw my second. If that's their choice.
Then you don't have to take any action at all, and that can let us all just kind of move forward.
Thank you. So, move, a second.
Got motion by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Sims to adjourn, call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Called to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority, August sixth, two thousand and twelve. We have a quorum. Item one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got motion by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith to approve the consent agenda, call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, new business.
No new business this evening or administrative report.
Move to adjourn.
Got motion adjourned by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith, call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Open the Shawnee Airport Authority meeting, August sixth, two thousand and twelve. We have a quorum. Item one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, new business.
No new business or administrative reports this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Smith, call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.